Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing for Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following are two pieces of legislation up for discussion by the public before Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 236, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the E. Walt House located at 186 Home Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood in the 9th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 237, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Maury Addison House located at 5134 Carnegie Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood in the 10th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for discussion. Thank you and have a great day.
Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing. Will the clerk please read the title of the bills?
Bill 236, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the E. Walt House located at 186 Home Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood, 9th Ward. Bill Number 237, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Maury Addison House located at 5134 Carnegie Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood, 10th Ward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I want to say we're also joined by Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Bobby Wilson. And I don't see any others yet. I don't see any others. And if others come on, I will try to announce them as they come on. And we have this first speaker. Do we, do we have anything from Sarah Quinn from City Planning first?
Definitely. I have a little presentation on each of the properties if you'd like to hear it.
Councilwoman Gross, I'll turn it to you.
I do think that's usual that we have the brief description, I think, in the public hearing. So, yes, thank you.
Yeah, if we can just have a brief update on what it is, what exactly it is, and then we'll hear from the public and then...
And just for reference, I believe that the very rich background packets on each property should be attached to the legislation on the City Council Legisstar page. Is that also correct, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Yes, correct. I was muted.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, well, we can't really see them and we're just getting a synopsis. Members of the public can, can see these packets.
They are available, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Quinn?
Thank you. The first property in question is currently known as E. Walt House. It's located at 186 Home Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood. It was, it's located, excuse me, it was constructed roughly around 1840 and it's also a contributing element in the Lawrenceville National Register Historic District. It's a two-story hip roof brick revival house constructed of red brick laid up in bond. The main facade is five bays wide and its top with a prominent wood cornice projecting over brick dentil course and wide brick entablature band across the width of the house. When the tract was, tract of land was purchased by Samuel E. Walt in 1787, the land extended between present-day 43rd Street and the Allegheny River. It was, it was incorporated into the city of Pittsburgh in 1868. And it extended all the way up to the Lawrenceville, or to the Bloomfield border. When E. Walt acquired the property, the immediate area was sparsely populated and Lawrenceville was founded in Pitt Township in 1814. The area, but it's area, but it's settled area extended along Butler Street between 38th and 41st Streets. The mansion was built before 1840, deduced from Samuel E. Walt's last will and testament. While there are no concrete gates for construction of the house, one article places the E. Walt mansion even earlier, as early as even 1806. Mansion's grounds, as I said, extended to Butler Street. And E. Walt's wife, Anna Irwin, died in Philadelphia while owning the mansion. After her death, her executors subdivided the property into building lots that fronted on 46th and other streets. By 1896, a family named Zionizer purchased the property for $9,000. The property was conveyed to the Braddock Trust Company after that. There were several sheriff sales after that. And eventually, the property was purchased in 1945 by the American Union Polish Brotherhood of St. Joseph's. They began using the hall, the community, community groups used the gathering, like got, used it as a gathering place. In May 1975, the home was conveyed to the Alliance of Poles of America, Number 7, to be used as their home office. The Historic Review Commission found that this property was significant for several reasons. And included in the email packet that I provided you are the minutes from the hearing where you can read specifically what their thinking was. But basically, they identified this property as significant, with an association, as a significant person. Simply, you know, Samuel E. Walt is mentioned in several articles from early on, even from 1787, as a landowner who provided land to the Pittsburgh Academy, which is now known as University of Pittsburgh. But I think, you know, that's, he is significant. I think the property represents an exemplification of a distinguished architectural type, style, or design. It's one of the few pre-Civil War houses which line Butler Street, it's still around. It's an example of Greek Revival brick domestic architecture. And probably, they could have delved, the nominator could have delved into the significance related to the Polish Club. And that's not something they did. They necessarily focused on the architecture, which is certainly is its most significant characteristic. Okay, so that's the E. Walt House. The next house is known as the Madison, Maury Addison House. This one is located at 2134 Carnegie Street, also in Lawrenceville. And honestly, these, these houses are matched pair. They're, they're constructed roughly the same time. How, you know, not by the same folks, but they're two, two remaining good examples of this architecture in the neighborhood. The Maury Addison House is located on the east side of Carnegie Street on a larger than the average lot size in Lawrenceville. Unlike dwelling along Carnegie Street, the property is set back from the street. Maury Addison House is a two-and-a-half story, five-bay-wide brick dwelling of a Greek Revival style. The Maury Addison House was constructed between 1830 and 1832 on a 100-acre tract situated between the Allegheny River and present 51st and 52nd Street. Extended over a mile, the property's layout reflects a common rural landscape known as a ribbon farm, which has short width of riverfront and a large depth containing farmland. It allows several farm owners to access river for transportation reasons without compromising fields and pastures. It's interesting to note, I went to grad school in Missouri where we had a lot of French settlements. And it's a very common surveying technique, land technique that the French used. And basically, it would, they're called French long lots, where the, the property owner would have river access, but they would also still get their three acres of land, but only use a little bit of the riverfront, so as more people can have it. So that's what they did here. And you'll be able to see maps of that, examples of that in the packet I provided to you guys. But in 1872, the Maury Madison House, where lands were purchased by a group comprised primarily of business partners of Andrew Carnegie for $170,000. The purchasers, too, included the Carnegie Brothers, Thomas and David McCandless, William Coleman and John Scott, were associated with the Lucy Furnace. Carsbrack and a public works contractor and his family lived at 5134 Carnegie Street between 1885 and 1907. He purchased the property for $5,500. In 1920, the property was being used as a rental by a woman, a widow, who used it as a boarding house. And finally, the Maury Madison House was owned by the Pittsburgh Electric Club between 1973 and 2004, when it was purchased by Carnegie Commons and used as architectural offices. Just like the E. Walt House, you know, this property, it is, the HRC found this property most significant because of its architectural style. Located, is similar to other estate homes in the mid-19th century. Other surviving examples of Greek Revival architecture within the city are rare because of changing forces over time. Outside of Lawrenceville, there are very few in town because of the fire that occurred in 1845. There are several on the north side, though. The property is significant because it's exemplification of a significant pattern of neighborhood development. As I mentioned, the surveying of the long lots, I think that's really significant because that's very uncommon. Well, here I say, it's uncommon in places with the exception of the Lawrence River, Detroit, Parks of Louisiana, and along the Mississippi River. So, we have our French friends to thank for that. Finally, the Maury Addison House was thought to be significant by the HRC because it's, because it's a neighborhood landmark in the sense that it doesn't fit square on its plot. It's, it has a setback, or all the other properties are right up to the curb. So that is why, for both properties, the HRC provided positive recommendations to you, to City Council, as did the Planning Commission. So that's what I have.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Always does such a great job. And so, with that said, we'll go on to our first speaker, Beth Rupert. You have three minutes to comment. Beth Rupert?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello. Thank you, City Council, for being here today. My name is Beth Chaser Rupert and I own the home at 186 Home Street. Our house has been nominated as stated in the record based first and foremost on Samuel E. Walt and his contributions. As a graduate from Peabody High School and the University of Pittsburgh, as well as a teacher that worked in the Pittsburgh Public Schools, I've never heard about Samuel E. Walt until we inherited this house. I'm sure all of you who have been raised and educated in Pittsburgh have never heard of him either. One has to wonder why people with historical impact stand the test of time, such as Carnegie, Mellon, and Fisk. There is nothing in Pittsburgh that has his name on it. Samuel E. Walt did have a bridge and street named after him, yet councils before you got rid of the name. Why, you wonder? Because Samuel E. Walt is someone that should not be revered. He is a slave owner who, even after the abolition of slavery, not only owned slaves, but increased the number. You may say that everyone back then owned slaves, which is not true, as many great pioneers didn't, as seen in the Free at Last paperwork that I gave you. As sheriff, he had a legal and moral duty to uphold the law and set his slaves free. He disregarded the law and continued to take away their civil rights and enslave them. He also was abusive to women, as he was arrested and fined for owning a brothel. Nominating a racist corrupt cop is not someone that should be revered, and this nomination would only hurt our community and further the divide. Three years ago, I had Berkshire Realty conduct a market analysis on the house and as a realtor, I listed the property. I had several sales agreements from people that wanted to rehab the house and live in it, but they all pulled out due to funding issues. Even Rick Belloli from Q Development, the savior of old homes, was not interested due to financial loss. No one, not the stakeholders, not the city, has offered to purchase the home to save it. The impact on this house on top of the COVID has left our family bankrupt. We will be filing for financial hardship. We have to sell this house or face financial ruin. This entire process violates our Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment rights to own property. You are taking away our family's homestead without just compensation. The National Historical Society would not even nominate this house without our consent. So why are you? Please put yourself in our position. Think about your father, who had worked hard all his life to purchase his family home. A house that he had paid taxes for over 40 years. A house that he left for your family to use to pay his debts and provide for your needs. Your father dies, thinking his legacy will help those that he loved. Then some stranger, who has no vested interest, comes in and tells you what you can do with your house. It puts extreme emotional and financial strain on your family. The impact is a trickle-down effect, as you may lose everything you worked hard for all your life as the bills for the house and worry just compound. How would you feel? If this house is deemed historic, you will be honoring a racist corrupt cop for a house that will in the end fall over and, God forbid, kill someone and in turn financially ruin a good, hard-working American family. Say no to this nomination and uplift the community by honoring black lives and building a new history by tearing down this dangerous structure, having beautiful new townhomes where new Lawrencevilians can live and prosper, provide us with our civil rights to property, and have the Maury home, which you just heard about, to showcase the Greek Revival era. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Rupert, and you have three minutes to speak. Your mic is off.
You're muted, Mr. Rupert.
Okay, are we, are we in? Apologize for that.
That's all right. We're all having our own difficulties with this.
Me more than some. Okay, well, hello.
Hi.
Thank you. And thank you, City Council, for bringing here today. Beth, could you turn yours off? We are in echo, so I apologize. My name is Eric Rupert and I own a home at 186 Home Street. It was my dying father's wish that I use this house to pay off his estate and use the remainder for my family. My father had been approached in the past concerning historical nomination and has always stated that he was not interested. If he were alive today, he would not be in support of this. As a mason contractor who has built many structures in the Pittsburgh area, I can speak to the nomination point of structural integrity. This house has no structural integrity, either in a historical or building standpoint, as it is dangerous and is falling. As you can see by our structural engineer's report, there is no saving this house without significant structural rehabilitation. My father, who owned a home, was in his 80s. And when I inherited the house, it needed a significant, significant amount of work. However, it was still habitable. Last October, the house was hit by a wind burst, which knocked down Jimmy Yinzler's property a block away. And it put pressure that on an already faltering roof. Our insurance company came in and said it requires too much work and we cannot afford to fix it. We tried to protect the community and we applied for a demolition permit. We were approved in November, but then we received a letter that our permit was denied on November 27th because my house had a historical nomination on it. This was very concerning because Sarah Quinn had stated there had not been a historical nomination and one was not approved until almost a week later, on December 3rd, at 10:00 a.m. Our house should have been demolished by law and for the good of the community. This house is dangerous and may fall to roof collapse, just like the Christian Fellowship Center Church on the north side. More concerning, the structural engineer stated, "When it does collapse on, on the house behind it, it could cause more destruction and possibly kill somebody." Our insurance company told us, "If it does fall, it will not be covered." So who then will be financially and morally responsible since we, as homeowners, are trying to do the right thing by requesting that it be torn down? How can I disregard, how can you disregard a licensed structural engineer as a builder? I have never seen such a thing. As far as the structural integrity from a historical view, the house has significantly been changed inside and out.
10 seconds.
There were changes before my father, as well as after. We cannot afford the upkeep or the repair.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we have Mr. Gary Kelmeyer.
Yes, Gary Kelmeyer, correct.
Good morning or good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? All right. Mr. Mayor, and members of council, thank you for this opportunity to speak against the...
We can't hear you now.
Does he have, does he have more than one device on or something?
Yeah, because he's muted on the one.
Right. You, you have more than one device, it's given an echo, so we're not able to hear you. You have to turn, yeah, you have to turn one of them off.
I will turn off the cell phone.
Okay. Okay. Now unmute yourself.
We should have told him to unmute himself first.
Unmute yourself.
Before, yeah.
You, you gotta unmute yourself.
Mr. Kelmeyer, please unmute yourself. If you look up on there, you're muted. Your microphone is muted.
Okay, now can you hear me?
You're good.
Now we can hear you. Keep, make sure all the other devices are off. Just this, this one is on.
Don't touch anything. Okay, please, I'm gonna disconnect the cell phone now. Okay, hello?
Okay, good.
I am so sorry.
Three minutes, start over.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for this opportunity to speak against the designation of 186 Home Street as an historic structure. Please, please do not approve this designation for two distinct reasons. First and foremost, Samuel E. Walt was a slave owner. The University of Pittsburgh publication, quote, "Free at last, slavery in Pittsburgh in the 18th and 19th centuries," unquote, confirms that E. Walt not only enslaved people, but increased his slaves while Pennsylvania already had the Quaker Act for the gradual abolition of slavery as a law. This is all confirmed in the census of 1810. Now proponents claim that E. Walt was a founder of the University of Pittsburgh. This is false. He rented the actual founder's land, his land near the point, which he had earlier stolen from Native Americans who had lived there for centuries. He then squeezed so much rent from them that they had to move to a remote area called Oakland. Now, the Planning Commission says the owner's history is irrelevant in a designation of historic structure. That is false. Pittsburgh's very own ordinance expressly states at Section 1104.04b2 that these considerations are required to be done. Mr. Mayor and council, as protests spread and symbols of systemic racism are being torn down globally, we cannot send a message to the world that Pittsburgh is a safe haven city so long as you are white. The second set of considerations I have for you are what we might call technical. And these establish that this structure is not appropriate for designation. Number one, it's the, the structure is an extreme deteriorated condition. This has been, and it has been extremely altered, both inside and out. As Eric said, the property is dilapidated and actually dangerous. Who is going to flock to Pittsburgh to see this E. Walt mess? Finally, there are many others who have sound examples, such as Mr. Cochran's house right in the neighborhood, that can be used. He's, as you said, she said, Ms. Quinn said, matched pair. He requests it. We do not. We oppose it. It would seem to me it's an unjust compensation and unjust taking without compensation of a person's property. Note that the Rupert's have been offered $400,000 by a very respected contractor to build a beautiful, safe residence, which would complement the neighborhood and conform with the neighborhood. It's not going to be some kind of modernistic eyesore. Now, Mr. Green says the roof might be falling in, so we should go out and fix it. He's not gonna go out. His loved ones are not gonna go out. He's like in the movie, "You go first, Indiana Jones, not us." Finally, the, Mr. Green, to paraphrase another statement, a well-known quote from President Reagan, "Mr. Green, Mr. Mayor and council, tear this house down." Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Speaker is Stephanie Russo. Stephanie? Stephanie on here? Okay, I don't see Stephanie. So we'll go to the next speaker. Melissa McSwigan. Melissa McSwigan.
Yes, hi, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. I, I'm just going to speak specifically to the slavery connection that was talked about. We did not know about the slavery connection at the Historic Commission hearing, where it probably would have been further researched. And the, and at that point, the property owner had said that Mr. E. Walt had no connection to the house. But following the HRC's positive recommendation, you know, allegations had been made on social media and we've been trying to investigate it further to understand the history. And I think some of the motivations definitely are in earnest, but maybe missing a few details and timeline. Certainly, according to the census records, the landowner of early Lawrenceville, Mr. E. Walt had slaves around 1780 to 1810. He also worked with John Woods to lay out our downtown street grid. And John Woods also had slaves. And his locally designated historic house in Hazelwood is about to be turned into a bar and restaurant. And it was mentioned that E. Walt was a sheriff and then went on to state legislature, where E. Walt lived with his wife and children in the 1700s and the 18, early 1800s, I don't know, and the house is probably long gone. The house at 186 Home Street that we're talking about today was built around 1840 for E. Walt's descendants. E. Walt died in 1841 and his wife had died a few years prior. It's my understanding that by around 1830, there were no slaves in Western PA, but slavery still existed in other parts of Pennsylvania. So while there may not be a direct connection to slavery with this particular house, the house is indirectly connected to Pittsburgh's slavery past. And of course, many are surprised to know that we did have slaves in Pennsylvania and some of our early founding families, even Quakers and William Penn, had slaves. And, you know, there is, there is a chance that, unfortunately, that anyone associated with early Pittsburgh development and land ownership in the 1700s and early 1800s may include a connection to slavery. No doubt racial injustice is part of what built and sustained Pittsburgh, as well as social, economic, and environmental injustice. But, and I don't just mean in the 18th and 19th centuries. But the proposed demolition of 186 Home Street is not to make amends for our slavery past, is to benefit the developer who may find the slavery connection convenient to their designation opposition in order to build more non-affordable housing in Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Ms. McSwigan. Thank you, Ms. McSwiggen. Now Bill Joyce, next speaker. Bill Joyce.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Bill Joyce, 30-plus year Lawrenceville resident. I am an architect with considerable experience with the adaptive use of historic buildings, including several national register properties. When I walk by the E. Walt house with casual observer who is seeing it for the first time, they inevitably say, "Hey, that house is different." When I explain that it predates the existing dense rowhouse fabric of the neighborhood as in fact a circa 1840 Greek revival house that had extensive grounds that originally stretched to the river, they are amazed and want to know more. It gives me the opportunity to talk about the historic Allegheny Arsenal and the semi-rural bucolic era when these arsenal-style Greek revival houses were built and historic Allegheny Cemetery was established. Saving and reusing the E. Walt house is critical, critical to telling Lawrenceville's story to future generations. I'm sure there's plenty in your packet about the integrity of the architectural fabric of this building. The owner's own Zillow description reinforces that and also states that the house is structurally sound. So I would challenge some of Mr. Rupert's comments about the structural condition of the house. My wife and I actually own a house that was, own a building, excuse me, that was damaged by that microburst. Very high decorative chimney crashed through the roof. We ended up taking half of the roof off, replacing the ridge beam, rafters, and floor joists. It was, you know, it was work, but it was doable. And we never considered demolishing the building because of the roof condition. Mr. Rupert claims he's a contractor. He should, if there are issues there, he should address it. They've taken no, they've taken no mitigation to protect the other properties if it is indeed in danger of collapsing. So I highly, I highly mistrust some of those comments. But I'd like to leave on the, on a more, on the high road here today and reiterate my last comment in my opening statement. Saving and reusing the E. Walt house is critical to telling Lawrenceville's story to future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Axtell.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is John Axtell. I live on South Pacific Avenue in Friendship. I moved to Lawrenceville in 1982. I purchased and restored a house on Main Street in 1985, which I still own. I have been active with Lawrenceville revitalization and preservation efforts continuously for close to 40 years. I urge City Council to concur in the judgment of the Historic Review Commission and the Planning Commission that the E. Walt and Maury houses are worthy of protection under the Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Ordinance. The Preservation Ordinance exists to protect just such landmark structures as the E. Walt and Maury houses. I and others have been attracted to Lawrenceville and Pittsburgh in no small part because of the authentic and distinctive character of the neighborhood and the city. This character stems as much from our community's heritage of stewardship of good architecture in buildings big and small as it does from new construction. The fine Greek revival design of the E. Walt and Maury houses make them exactly the kind of place defining buildings that establish the character of a neighborhood like Lawrenceville and a city like Pittsburgh. They will join numerous examples of similar historic houses that have been successfully maintained as economically viable properties in Lawrenceville, including my own house on Main Street. I hope that City Council will ensure that the Maury and E. Walt houses will continue to contribute to a successful future for Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our list of registered speakers. And now I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Gross, because this is her district and we know that she is very in touch with her community. Councilwoman Gross, do you have anything you want to add?
Sure, absolutely. I'm just grateful for everything. There's been a robust community conversation about these buildings. And I think members of council who have served with me now for six years have heard me talk about the significant changes that have already happened in Lawrenceville. And so I think it just kind of lends some context to the significance of landmarks when so much of the neighborhood is changing so quickly for people. It's very stressful for people who've lived there for multiple generations. We also hear a desire from even newcomers to preserve the architectural integrity of the neighborhood. I've driven some members of council through the neighborhood so that they could see the amount of new construction, not only in the big footprints near the river's edge, but increasingly there are private demolitions on parcels inside of these historic blocks. And then these kind of like five-story mega mansions squeezed in to walk with communities frequently with these front-facing garage doors. So I just wanted to take a moment to remind you that these are going up continuously. I think we're seeing sewer modules for another six to 10 of these new home, new town homes at a large scale going up. And I think it's significant that both the Historic Review Commission and our testimony today spoke to the importance of preserving these last two examples from this historic moment that precedes much of the other later Victorian small-scale townhouses. And so I, I am, I'm supportive myself. I've been through the community conversations on both of these homes. And while I sympathize with the owners, I do think there's a path forward for them. They are, of course, motivated by the price that they see offered. And I do think that while they are, you know, eager to get the money out of the property they inherited, that there's a way to fill both needs and, and not, and as they present that demolition is the only way forward for them. So that is what I've heard in kind of, in, in the community conversations that I've participated in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I just have to apologize. I, I'll get to Councilwoman Wilson in one moment, but I missed a speaker.
Yes, yes, I was just.
Joe Casey. I apologize. Joe, are you still with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize.
Oh, it's fine. It's fine. Yeah, so my name is Joe Casey. I'm a, I'm a current resident of the 10th Ward and, and a managing member of the business currently under contract to purchase 186 Home Street. Our business is a small-scale residential development company and builder heavily invested in the Lawrenceville community as well as others. I understand this hearing is to determine the historical relevance of 186 Home Street. I believe it is important to evaluate the entire situation objectively and practically without discounting the historical and social issues that have been heard or will be heard on this property. A quick background, we, we initially engaged the Rupert family, it must have been three years ago now, after seeing for sale signs in the yard and online advertisements for the property. Our initial conversations were not so successful, but we kept a close eye on the listing and remained in touch with the Rupert family. After months, if, if not years, of the property being on the market, we reached back out and ultimately came to an agreement. What I found interesting was after signing the contract, the family shared a list of, of leads and inquiries the family diligently, diligently kept records of. Some of the very community groups and individuals that initiated this historical nomination and are present on this call have walked through that property and evaluated it themselves as an investment and did not find it financially feasible to move forward. But she had not, in that entire time, she received no viable offers from those individuals. My, my background in finance and private equity, along with currently living and investing in the community, I can objectively draw some conclusions as to why the community groups or any other interested parties have not moved forward with the purchase and restoration of the, the existing property, most notably important financial feasibility. The property requires extensive work to simply ensure the safety of anyone inside within the vicinity of the, or within the vicinity of the property, let alone attempting to meet current engineering and code requirements. This is clearly outlined and explained in, in the multiple and extensive reports done by an independent structural engineer. In addition to the structural work to render the property, extensive restoration to the property is required to make the property somewhat habitable, which is made exponentially more difficult and costly due to the sheer size of the structure. In addition to figuring out the engineering and restoration of the dilapidated property, investor or individual need to justify to themselves and most likely a lender that the investment will result in an equitable project. Even if a potential buyer were to convince themselves and possibly a lender the financials revival, they would then likely need to sell, sell to another individual or refinance, which require an appraisal. If this, if this property were to go to market today, it would be the largest residential property within miles and considering the significant capital requirements, a relative value would need to be achieved that would be higher than any property ever sold in Lawrenceville. It's my opinion that is why this property has never been, has never been sold to, to an individual that is looking to restore this property, even though it has been marketed for years with documented showings to multiple historic groups, community groups, and hundreds of interested parties in-
Thank you. And thank you for holding on to the line. We have all the speakers, correct? Okay. And Councilwoman Gross, were you done speaking or did you want to say anymore?
No, that does it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is Councilwoman Wilson still on the line? Councilwoman Wilson, not anything?
Yeah, I had some questions. Is there someone? I know I saw Melissa. I can't see her last name. McSwiggen?
McSwiggen.
Okay, McSwiggen. And then also Sarah Quinn. I just want to ask a couple of questions about-
Point of order. I'm sorry, point of order. We don't do interrogatory in a public hearing. Those are public comments.
If he wants to ask a question of-
You don't ask a question to people in the audience?
You can if I say.
Audience.
The people in the audience, of the people from City Planning.
City Planning.
Yes.
Sorry, I, I, I'm just trying to clarify who, who are these people? Because someone got on and was starting to clarify some history, so I didn't know they were part of the actual commission, not being at the tables.
So let me just say, all I have are people that are either homeowners or attorneys or just people, residents speaking in favor or opposed. That's all I have. And other than that, we have Sarah Quinn, who works for City Planning, who can answer any of those questions. And if you have other questions unrelated to what Sarah can answer, you might want to talk to the Councilwoman who represents the area.
No, no, I don't, I don't have, um, yeah, I don't think I have anything other than what I could ask Sarah. I didn't know if the other person was, I didn't know if they were a part of the Historic Review Commission or not. So I was just trying to get some clarity on that. But anyway, so Ms. Quinn, I just want to ask you, was the, was the history, this new history that's coming about, and just so I have some clarity on this, it's saying that the history of the house, the correction that someone suggested, was that it was a descendant of E. Walt who had slaves? Was that, is that the, like, did you all have any time to go back and look into this?
The, the history of the house, there was a descendant of, what was your question again?
So there's a lot of comment circling around the owner and the, the person who built this property or, or who, or who lived in it. And so I just wanted some clarity around that. Like, how much is, what that person representative taking into account with, with the Historic Review Commission?
Well, I mean, I can tell you, you, if, okay, if the packets that I usually print up and give to you guys, you got hard copies this, this time, because we're not together. That, in the back of those, they have the minutes from the hearings from Planning Commission and from the Historic Review Commission. You can, you can look in there and review the discussion from the Historic Review Commission that will explain exactly which criteria they thought were the most important. Okay? What I can tell you is the nomination that we received, it was written by Carol Peterson, who is a renowned local historian, no longer with us. There was nothing in her documentation that included the information related to Mr. E. Walt's. I want to, I don't want to say extracurricular interests, but there was nothing related to slavery or a brothel or anything like that. That's what I know. I can tell you that the documentation we were provided appeared to have come off of a website. I was told it was from the University of Pittsburgh. I think, you know, Melissa McSwiggen, who spoke today, she, she, she is, she has come before our commission as a representative of Preservation Pittsburgh. She did not say that today. She might have just been as an interested citizen today. Um, what I can tell you as a professional historian, long time, um, sometimes this kind of thing happens. Um, you know, and basically what you want to do is put the whole story out there, you know, and, and, and talk about it. And it's, there's, there's, you know, there's, there's some unpleasant things that have happened. And I think it's important to sort of recognize those and talk about those and sort of try and figure out the best way to deal with that stuff together. Um, did I answer your question? You know, it doesn't look like I did.
Maybe my, I think, I think maybe my connection's a little bad, but I think I got the, the gist of what you're saying. But I just want to clarify, to your knowledge, I can go back and read what you suggested, but to your knowledge, did, was this house the, this was built for the descendants of this individual?
Let me see what we have here. It says the mansion was built before 1840. And he died in, what, 1841, I believe? I mean, I think it's possible when you don't, we don't have, the problem is, we don't have the, the kind of records available that will be definitively saying, especially at that age around here. Um, you know, I think it's possible. I'm sorry?
How did the, the current owners acquire the property?
The current, the current owners, my understanding is that Mr. Rupert's father passed and left it to the children. That's my understanding.
the main decision from your, you know, from your group was that it's based on that this pre, this design, this architectural significance predates another era of, of structure. So this actually, is this the only property that shows this significance and this, this type of architecture or there are others around? Or is this the only one of that era that still exists?
Well, what I can tell you is the Maury Addison House, which is also on the docket for today, is another one. I think, I think-
Gotcha, right?
Yeah, I mean, the truth is-
Pretty sure there's a last two in the neighborhood, but Councilwoman Wilson probably have one or two in your district.
I was going to say, there's, there's, because of the fire that occurred in downtown, most of the stuff from this period is up on the north side. So, so especially geographically, this is an unusual place to have these remaining. So.
Okay. Yeah, this, it is a conversation we had since there has been so much destruction of our historical buildings and structures, especially in my area. They cleaned out a whole valley. And it's, you know, it is significant to, you know, to save these structures. What, what will be the plan moving forward if, if council votes to approve the historic? I mean, it would be on the, it would be on the owner to, to continue to keep it so it wouldn't be dilapidated, correct?
Well, I mean, it's, it's still private property, so that, that doesn't change. I mean, I think it, it gains some notoriety here in town. Um, I mean, I can, I can tell you, since the nomination process started, I did send one developer over to- I did send one developer over to them that I've known, I probably shouldn't say this, but we're trying to save the house. So I sent one developer who's worked on the north side to those guys to talk to them to see if there's any viability because luckily enough, this, both of these properties are located within the Lawrenceville National Register Historic District. Both of them are considered contributing to the historic significance of that. So that means both of these properties are eligible for historic preservation tax credits for income-producing properties. So there's an opportunity there. Um, you know, I don't know what the answer was, is, I mean, if, 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 you know, if Council was willing to give me, give me some money to make a fund, to do some micro grants or something, I think that would be great. But right now, what we can do is, you know, help the owners as best we can, find somebody to help preserve it.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Councilman. So I'll just say that as I hear these conversations about historic preservation, I'll still remember that the Old Stone Tavern is sitting 10 years late designation with no, no funding, no help, and actually a blight in our community at this point. And so I think that, you know, it's a conversation we need to have. If we're going to designate things historic, we have to have a plan on how we're going to preserve them. We can't just let things sit, designate them and then, especially when we're doing something against an owner's will and then just allow, sit there and not, and not have any plan to help them or to help the community preserve them, right? With that said, I'm going to work with, actually, Councilwoman Gross, do you want this to be on the agenda for the next meeting?
No, if you don't mind, I think I've got, we need some time to have some other, to have the community members' availability for the next public comment. So we're looking at a date later in June, where I think we're well inside of our action window.
Okay, so is there, do you know the timeframe that we have to have this back up?
Madam Clerk, it's 90 days or, I mean, but I don't know when you got the letter from Planning. Oh, maybe Sarah knows.
Well, I, I can tell you the formula, I can't tell you the date. It's 120 days from when the mayor sends the legislation over, which is big.
I thought it was 100, I thought it was 120 days from the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission letter or Planning Commission hearing? The Planning Commission sent a letter to Madam Clerk.
There are two, there are two different dates. 120 days from Planning Commission is when you have to have your public hearing. Okay?
Okay.
Which we're doing today. And then 120 days from when the mayor sends the legislation over is when you have to have your vote.
Yeah, yeah, you have to have an action before.
Correct.
That, that, you know, or is.
Could you maybe, Madam Clerk, when you get an opportunity, will you send us?
I will. I'll send those, I'll send that window to you so you all will be aware. But I think you're, you're, you're good if you're saying June, Councilwoman Gross, you're, you're fine.
Thank you.
Okay, good. And then we'll work with Councilwoman Gross to put it back on the agenda when she's ready, okay?
Sure, thank you.
Do I have a meeting to, a motion to adjourn the meeting, Councilwoman?
So moved, I mean, a motion to adjourn.
The second, Councilwoman Wilson?
Second.
Moving to adjourn, thank you, everyone.